I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, meaning to order for Monday, September 18th at this time. We will start with Ms. Griffin, providing the invocation, followed by Ms. Carrie Sanders, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. Bless our citizens, our first responders, and all of those defending our nation. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to acknowledge any of the elected officials that are with us this evening. I see Alderman Rick Grant from North Toppsil Beach. He's here as always, and I believe he is the only one here with us tonight. If I didn't see you, just raise your hand and we'll acknowledge that you're here and we appreciate you being here, Rick. At this time, if everyone is okay with the adoption of the agenda, we need a motion on that, but hold that.
Still move?
Not yet. I gotta remind everybody, we ask that all of the attendees, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited, no more than five minutes, and may be on any issue in which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is adopted. At this time, if any Board members has a question or concern about the consent agenda items, and would like that to be removed, now is the time to do that. Otherwise, do we have a-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. At this time, we'll turn this over to our County Manager, Ms. Griffin, for the public comment.
Thank you Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Tonight, we have six citizens who have signed up to speak during our public comment period. I will remind Members of the public, you have exactly five minutes in which to speak. Once you come to the podium, please have your seat right after that five-minute period has passed. Address your comments to the Board as a whole, not to any individual Commissioners. The Board members will not be responding to questions. They respond if they wish to during Commissioners' comments at the end of the meeting. Please keep your language professional and do not have a conversation with those in the audience. At this time, I will recognize the speakers and the order in which they signed up. Please, in case I have mispronounced your name or address, repeat your name and address when you come to the podium. Our first speaker is Diane LeBlanc, 155 Rain Tree Circle.
Good evening Chairman Foster and all the County Commissioners. It is a joy to be here with you tonight to bring you some good news. Some day when we all pass away and we're no longer on the face of this earth, it won't, people aren't gonna remember what we bought, positions that we had. People are gonna remember the legacy that we left. So tonight, I come to share with you part of the legacy that the County Commissioners are leaving because of the amazing decision that you all made to build the Big Branch Bike Park. In 2013, the Onslow County Composite started with three students and four coaches. This past season, we had 28 students and 20 coaches, and it's growing and it continues to grow. There are, we are part of the North Carolina Interschool Astic Cycling League. There are 41 teams in our league, from as far west as Brevard, North Carolina, to as far east Jacksonville, North Carolina. Our high school team, it is a joy to share with you, placed third in the state overall this year. Additionally, there's something that we started this year in our league, and it was a team league. Outstanding teams in the state ranked first, second, and third. Our team's score was determined by team race points, by volunteer hours, and by trail corps hours. I am extremely excited to share with you Commissioners and Chairman Foster that our team, the Onslow County Composite, placed first overall in the state this year. So thank you again for the legacy that you all are leaving. Thank you for what we're able to do because of Big Branch Bike Park. And in closing, I want to say this, we don't recruit students for Onslow County Composite. We recruit families, and we are, we know that we're making a difference in the county, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much Ms. LeBlanc. Our next speaker is Jeff LeBlanc of 155 Rain Tree Circle.
Good evening Commissioners. It is a pleasure to be here again with, with good news. There's a few of us here to thank you for your vision when it came to Big Branch because of the outstanding addition it's made to the sport that we love. A few corrections on my wife, we didn't start in 2013, we started in 2018, okay? There aren't 41 teams, there's 64 teams, and so it's pretty large across the state, okay? And then we did start with three students in 2018 on the itty-bitty little trail out towards the Commons. The addition of Big Branch Bike Park allowed us to grow a team, to meet people out there riding their bikes. You probably already know this, but in case you don't, I think Big Branch Bike Park is one of the most visited parks in Onslow County. I think you had a counter out there to count cars, so it is one of the most visited parks in Onslow County. As my wife mentioned, we did take third-place high school, first place overall. I have taken a team picture in front of our Big Branch sign. On the back is an article we submitted to the paper, which they did not feel deserving to print. So one of my coaches is gonna come up later and read that, but it is on the back. But I don't know if you have a place to hang this, but I do want to present this to the County Commissioners, a team picture at Big Branch Bike Park of our students and our coaches. We had an outstanding season. We're getting ready to start up next month with our 2024 season and kick off again. So my encouragement to the Commissioners is you have a great vision. I know there's a vision out there for Phase Two at Big Branch Bike Park. I highly recommend that we continue to pursue the adaption of more trail, more spaces for our students to ride. I'm out there constantly. The parking lot is never empty. Maybe around midnight, it might be empty, but if you go out there at seven in the morning until the sun sets, there are cars in that parking lot. There are families having fun. There are kids having fun. We see them out there all the time. It's a great sport. It's outdoors, and you guys have done a great thing. Guys and gals, thank you very much.
Thank you so much Mr. LeBlanc. Our next speaker is Mike Heightfield of 103 Chincapin Court.
Evening Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Mike. Thanks for, you pronounced it great. Appreciate that. Full disclosure, I get a little bit choked up when I read this. I did write it on Facebook a while back, so I apologize if I get teary-eyed here. Coastal beaches and gentle waves makes for easy living in the peaceful coastal plains of North Carolina. It is what draws many to vacation along our beautiful coast. For most Onslow County residents, our home is reputation for being benign and low-key. Onslow County, home of Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, beaches, woods, and a slow way of living. As a matter of fact, just a few years ago, Jacksonville had billboards along 24 that stated Jacksonville. We put the "slow" in Onslow. It's a great place to raise a family, an easy choice for retiring, and a gentle land with good people. It's from this lowland coastal plain with flat ground for miles around that North Carolina's top competitive youth mountain bike team entered the stage. Wait, what? A mountain bike team in Onslow County? The state's best program. You heard that right. We're taking the "slow" out of Onslow. Under the surface of the sleepy little coastal county is the state's best mountain bike program. There are 64 teams with almost 900 riders competing across the state in the NCA ICL, a division of the National Interscholastic Cycling Association, or NAICA. Most of the teams in the state at least have hills for the kids to practice on. We have the Surf City Bridge. Those teams have single-track trails with technical sections full of rocks. We have sand and roots at the Jacksonville Commons. Most of those teams have a dozen trail options open to the public within an hour's drive. We have two. Those teams have a steady base of kids to develop as people of character and racers. Our team cycles through the PCS season each summer and gets some mostly fresh crop to invest in, and often is not able to see kids progress through the program start to finish. And yet, here we are, the unexpected underdog powerhouse in the North Carolina youth mountain biking scene. The Down East Dirt Dogs are Onslow County's homegrown mountain bike racing team. They compete at the middle school and high school level at several events across the state. The high school team finished third for the state, having beaten out teams with big-name sponsorships and access to some of the best resources available. During the season, the Dirt Dogs high school team had a rider crash at every race and bike malfunctions to contend with. They still took third place through sheer willpower and grit. The league awards points for several categories: competitive standings, volunteer hours accumulated at race events, and hours invested in maintaining local mountain bike trails. When adding in all the work done by parents and middle school team members, the Down East Dirt Dogs took the top honors for the season. Woo! This is the distinctive of the Dirt Dogs. It's part of our DNA. The beginning of each season comes with new kids and parents eager to ride, anxious about starting, and unsure about the future expectations and the sacrifices to be made. The coaches demonstrate a high value of coaching life through the context of mountain biking and developing the character of each person on the team. Riding ability and speed come second to character and consideration of others. A middle school dirt dog racer stopped during his race, sacrificing his position to aid a rider from another team who had fallen. A high school racer who consistently had podium-worthy finishes gave up her position and sacrificed her overall season standings to ride behind some slower riders during a tricky section of the trail and encouraged them to finish strong instead of taking a risky pass that would discourage those young riders. Slow in Onslow? Absolutely. Unless, of course, there's a dirt dog around a person who needs a friend. Thank you Onslow County for supporting our team. Correction. Thank you Onslow County for supporting your team. If you're looking for a community, a community to connect with, a group your kids might enjoy hanging out with, want to help develop strong minds and strong bodies in the youth of Onslow County, or just want to see more kids on bikes, come find us. The Bicycle Shop on North Marine Boulevard or the Bicycle Gallery in downtown Jacksonville can get you in touch with us. Thanks a lot, y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much Mr. Heightfield. Our next speaker is Mr. Brian Russell of 213 Creek View Circle.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you so much for giving me a couple minutes to talk about what you've already heard about. I am a proud member of the Down East Dirt Dogs. I'm the coach on that team. But I'm also the League Director of the entire North Carolina Interscholastic Cycling League. They gave you some of the stats, over 60 middle school and high school teams across the state of North Carolina, 900 registered student athletes last season, and over 550 coaches. And what we try and do in this league is, just like those previous speakers said, is build strong minds, body, and character in our youth, but we're really building lifelong mountain bikers. We're building that lifelong commitment to a community, and we do that in a couple of unique ways. What I like to talk about, mountain biking as a sport, everybody rides in this league. It doesn't matter your background, doesn't matter your skill level. If you show up to one of our teams, you get to ride and you get to participate. It is one of the only sports that I'm aware of, and what hooked me is, as a parent with a little bit of training, you become a coach, you're on the field with your son or daughter. You're literally on the trail. And so what we're really doing in this league is, just like Diane said, is not just more kids on bikes, it's more families on bikes. And when we came here in 2020, I retired out of the Marine Corps this year because I finally figured out what I wanted to be when I grew up, like leading kids on the mountain bikes. That sounds pretty cool. We came here in 2020 and missed a pretty fun year, if everyone remembers that. Came out of Maryland, and it ripped my kids' hearts apart, leaving their friends, no going-away parties. My son didn't have a senior prom, senior graduation. The very first thing we did, the first day we were in Onslow County, we were on a bike trail with the Down East Dirt Dogs and those members, and it repaired my family. And what I find is, we're repairing families all across the state of North Carolina. My daughter, who doesn't even like mountain biking, just loves being part of the culture, invited two of her friends in the league from western North Carolina to spend a week in Onslow County with her down here. So this is all about relationships and whatever perception you have of what goes on at Big Branch, there's some pretty intense shredding and good stuff out there, but it's really, magic happens every day on mountain bike trails in terms of relationships. Mental health improves, physical fitness improves. I gave each of you a league brochure. Through our studies we do and other organizations, we are seeing that time and time again. And so, so my vision for Onslow County and Big Branch as the League Director is I would love to bring one of my league events here. Could you imagine 900 kids at Big Branch Bike Park and, you know, 1,000 parents? And what we found through some of our studies is we bring upwards of $75,000 to a community. They need hotels. They're gonna go to restaurants. They're gonna eat out. I'm gonna hire some food trucks to come out and support that event. And obviously, everyone needs a place to put that, so I order the Porta-Jons too. But anyway, we're investing in the community and 1,900 hours of trail work in this league. Most nonprofits say that's about a $30 investment per hour in there, so your Down East Dirt Dogs are putting upwards of $3,000 into investing the trails all by themselves here. And so I want to say thank you for investing in Big Branch Bike Park, and I want to ask you to continue to consider that investment in Big Branch Phase Two and the like, so we can continue to get more kids on bikes, lifelong mountain bikers, and really building relationships and community across really all of North Carolina. So thank you again for what you're doing out here in Onslow County.
Thank you Mr. Russell. Our next speaker is Dr. Gobishan. I believe it's 120 Memorial Drive.
Good evening Honorable Commissioners, the County Manager and staff of the Onslow County Department. I come here this evening to share, five minutes of my time, of course, with y'all, to begin with by sharing with you three important dates. October 1st, 1996, June 10, 2013, and September 11, 2023. Let me start with the last date, September 11, 2023. It's very important because that was our last meeting recently of the Consolidated Human Services Agency Advisory Board, consisting of 11 advisors, 11 advisors, 11 professionals, who are all citizens of Onslow County. One of your Commissioners, Commissioner Walter Scott, has been a very vital member to our, to our group of advisory members. At this point too, I'd like to congratulate the two members that you've appointed recently, Heather Dwayne, who represents the nursing sector, and Nicholas Lanier, who represents the engineering sector, to the board, the advisory board. Thank you. Second one is October 1st, 1996. That is the day I came to Onslow County. Not as a resident, but a pediatrician, out of, out of training from the Cleveland Clinic in Ohio. Onslow County is my home. It is the home, the only county I know. And this is also the home and county of our military, our veterans, and their staff. I thank you to all those who have served to protect us and to protect the United States. Not just the military, the Marines, the active-duty staff, the veterans, the, their family members, and the dependents, of course. They have taken, and together with them, I share our gratitude. And over the 28 years of being here in Onslow County as a pediatrician, I've taken care of you, your children, your grandchildren, and you're probably your relatives too. I likewise, in return, have served the community in various capacities. I've been on the Health Board. I've been on the Onslow Memorial Hospital Authority, and currently, I'm still at the Consolidated Human Services Agency as an advisor in the physician sector. And I thank you for appointing and reappointing me to that position. Thank you Commissioners. I bring you to my next point, which is Onslow County. What has happened to Onslow County? In the past 28 years, we have seen tremendous growth and change in Onslow County. From the 2023 county map book, Onslow is regarded as a young county. It is the 13th highest paid in North Carolina, 25th fastest growing in North Carolina. It has the lowest median age of 25.5 years. It has the highest population less than 18, which is 31%. It has the second highest veteran population in North Carolina, and it has the lowest population of citizens less than 65. Over the past 27 years, Onslow County's population has grown. From what I knew in 1995, when I was applying for a job, it was reported 75,000. That excluded Camp Lejeune. 2,000 went up to 150,476. 2010 went up to 186,891. Currently, 2023, it's 207,298. That is 38% increase in population over those 23 years, or an increase of 56,000. Based on the population, our demographics show that we have, we have a significant number in, under the 18 age group. But I'd like to narrow it down in the interest of time, it's to this population, out of this population, there are 48,397 Medicaid recipients, or almost 24% of the total population. Of this, 80, 46% are less than 18 years of age. 64, 6.4% are greater than 65, and 34% are between the age of 19 and 44. The reason I bring that about is because the Human Services Agency, despite the increases in manpower, are still overworked, understaffed, but definitely working hard to serve these beneficiaries that, that the county brings. In 2014, we had, we had 237 employees for every 100,000 people in the community. 2023, in spite of the additions that the county has agreed to and added, we are up to, we are still at 217, which puts us in the lower ed, lower level among 100 counties in Onslow, in the, in North Carolina. Based on this data and demographics, I'd like to present some solutions. We do need more money. We do need more space. The first solution I have is ask the federal government. Second solution, ask the DoD. We do have a substantial population here. Third solution, ask the state legislature. And lastly, look at the sales tax solution, where the county can increase the percentage of the county tax from 2.25 to 2.5% to hopefully help increase the manpower of our agency. Thank you.
Thank you Dr. Gobishan. Our final speaker this evening for public comment is Ms. Debbie Wolschel, 209 Joey Court.
As a taxpayer citizen, I have a vested interest and a voice supposedly on what goes on with this county and our public schools. This Board provides funding to the Onslow County schools. However, according to the Onslow County School Superintendent, Mr. Collins, I do not have a voice. Mr. Collins sent me a letter in response to my recent complaint about pornography, obscenity, and intense violence in books that are in our schools. But since I'm not a parent or a guardian of a child in the school system, he refuses to do an investigation on the books. I guess it doesn't matter that I'm a grandparent, and I'm also a taxpayer in Onslow County. According to him, I have no say and I have no voice. He doesn't have to listen to me. Because of this, I want a bill set up for taxpayer rights with schools, or a bill set up that if you don't have any kids in school, then you do not pay taxes that go to the schools. The schools do not need my money if my voice doesn't matter. Probably same to you guys too. You guys don't listen to us either. I urge all taxpayers who do not have kids in school to ask for reimbursement, and I'm asking for mine too. In addition, the Board doesn't seem to be concerned with our safety of our schools, and neither does our school, our Board of Education. But instead, you guys and the Board of Education are wanting to put $3 million in for a pool with the YMCA. In addition, the Board of Education has proposed an additional $3 million as well, as long as three, as well as $3 million with the county for that same pool. Evidently, this Board or the Board of Education are not concerned with the safety of our children. Due to the recent violence in the schools, those fundings should be used to support our sheriff, so that he can add back the deputies that he had to remove off his budget, his recent budget. These deputies are needed to protect our children and our Onslow County residents. They are more important than what we need a pool for. I urge all taxpayers to speak up about this manner, and I urge you guys to consider doing that bill so that I don't have to pay for taxes to the schools since I don't even have a say as a concerned citizen. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Wolschel. That concludes our public comment period this evening. Chairman?
All right, so that takes us right into a public hearing. So Ms. Griffin, if you'd like to start us with the, the first one, we'll get started.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have three public hearings this evening on the schedule. Our first one is PREZ 2023-00008. It's the public hearing on the Beagle rezoning, and I will turn it over to our Planning and Development Director, Carter Metcalf, for the staff background.
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman, and our esteemed County Commissioners. The first item, as Ms. Griffin already said, was the Beagle Drive rezoning request, PREZ number 2023, number eight. Applicant is Mr. David Fields, and he is also one of the owners. The other owners are Mary Aldrich and his wife Deborah Fields. Now, to begin looking over the requests from Residential 20, or R20, to Residential 15, also known as R15. Two tax properties are the subject of the rezoning, 1315-261.9 and 1315-261.10. Location is Beagle Drive, located in the Swansboro Township, and the rezoning area is .85 acres, and the use is established residential. Now, overview of the services, there is a 6-inch unwasse water line along Beagle Drive. Properties are served by individual septic. Fire service is northeast Onslow with an ISR rating of four. And the closest traffic count we could obtain was Great Neck Landing Road in 2019, with an annual average daily trip count of 2,400. Staff estimates the capacity there over 12,000. Schools servicing the property is Queens Creek Elementary, Swansboro Middle, and Swansboro High School. Now, we'll take a look at the zoning map. There you can see along Beagle Drive, the first section of the Waters Ed subdivision is R20. You can see there, behind it, there is some pink, and that is R15. Now, we'll compare the two districts. Residential 20 is a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, .46 acres, and the purpose of that district is to accommodate low-density single-family in suburban areas of the county that have access to the necessary infrastructure and could support development at that scale. Now comparatively to R15, or Residential 15, has a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, at .34 acres, and the purpose of that district is to accommodate moderate single-family residential developments in suburban areas of the county that have access to that necessary infrastructure and support development at that scale. Now, we'll look at the comprehensive plan, identify as the property as medium-density residential. And this category provides for a medium-density single-family, planned multifamily, and limited commercial nodes. Now, we'll take a look at the map, and you can see the properties. There is the medium-density residential along with the rest of Beagle Drive. Now, I'll look at the reasonableness and the public interest. The proposed rezoning may be considered reasonable due to other residential zoning in the surrounding area. There's R20, and there's R15, and the lots would become more conforming. This request is supported by Policies 13, 20, and 23, and supports the county wants a diversity of housing. Now, a point of note, Residential 20 and Residential 15 are both corresponding zoning districts to medium-density residential, and the proposed rezoning could be considered unreasonable because R20 is already a corresponding zoning district. Now, it happened at Planning Board, met on August 24th. Now, what happened at Planning Board, met on August 24th, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of it. No citizen spoke against the request, and the owner spoke on behalf of the rezoning. Take a look at the aerial, you can see the surrounding area. You can see there, off to the left, is kind of the rest of Waters Edge and the Waters Edge along Beagle Drive. Look a little bit closer at the property, you can see the existing use there, the residential, the two applicant's homes. And then you can see the property there from the road. Now, the request is before you. These properties were rezoned in our 160D update in 2021. At that time, the county rezoned about 10% of the property in Onslow County. It was, to say the least, a Herculean effort on behalf of staff, and during that time, we tried to notice everyone who was rezoned. We sent over 18,000 postcards notifying not only the statutory requirement of those outside of the county, but if you lived in the county and you were being changed, you were also sent a postcard. We posted over 218 signs, did multiple meetings, had online tools for people to access it. And so, we really tried to make sure that we did our due diligence as staff to make sure folks were notified. Because that is why the properties are 20. Originally, it was RA. And so, is it respectfully requested of the Board of Commissioners to consider the proposed zoning map amendment of PREZ 2023, number eight, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county? This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Carter. At this time, I will open the public hearing for PREZ 2023-8, the Beagle rezoning. We have one citizen who has signed up to speak, I believe it is the applicant, Mr. David Fields, 102 Beagle Drive. If you would like to come forward and speak.
Good evening. I own the property at 102 Beagle Drive, and the neighbor, Ms. Mary, owns the property next to me. Like they spoke earlier, originally, the properties were R15. I bought the property in 2020, and my neighbor offered me the small section behind my house, which really is no use to her. So, I cleaned it up, cleared it up, and in the meantime, the pandemic hit. I couldn't find a surveyor for over a year and a half, because they were too busy doing big jobs and didn't want a small, little parcel to do. So, by the time I got it surveyed and actually went to have it done, I didn't realize, because I don't live there full-time, that we were being rezoned. I thought the area was being rezoned, but not particularly a lot that had already been zoned for R15. I don't know how you can take a R15 lot and turn it into a R20 when there's not enough land there anyway. Okay? So, in the meantime, I filed a petition to have it rezoned, and of course, it's taken a little while for that to happen as well, but we feel like it would be more in uniform with the neighborhood. If you look at the map, it's actually the, excuse me, the smallest lot in that section of houses. That parcel of land was not part of the original homes that were built on that strip. Ms. Mary purchased that strip separate, and then as people moved in on the street, she allowed them to have the section behind their home. My section was the only section that had not been acquired by anybody, and she was gracious enough to let me have it if I paid for the surveying and, you know, to get it redone. So, that's the reason for the request, and I hope to see you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fields. At this time, I'll close the public hearing for PREZ 2023-8, and it is now available for the Board of Commissioners to discuss.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
These are, Carter, where's, these two properties, these two houses are non-conforming under R20, is that correct?
So, they would be below the minimum lot size. They were previously were zoned RA, or rural agriculture, had a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, so the rezoning didn't change that fact. If anything, it helped them gain that residential zoning, which standard subdivisions would expect to have the protections under zoning. That was part of that 160D effort. But to answer your question, they are below the minimum lot size of R20.
So, we caused the problem, we need to fix it.
That's very much.
Very much.
That's it. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Commissioners, our next item is for PREZ 2023-16, and it will be a public hearing on the Baysden rezoning, and I will turn it over again to Carter Metcalf for the staff background.
The next item, Chairman and Commissioners, is the Baysden rezoning, PREZ 2023, number 16. The applicant is Mr. Charles F. Riggs and Associates, and the owners are industrial homes. Overview of the request, this requested change is from Residential 15 to rural agriculture. One property is the subject of the rezoning with tax map number 749-5. Location is at Tumbling Brook Lane in the Stumps Sound Township. The rezoning area is 26.4 acres, and the existing use is single-family residential. Now, look at the services, there's a 6-inch Onwassa waterline along Tumbling Brook Lane. Property served by individual septic systems. Fire district is South Onslow or Holly Ridge. Fire district ISO rating of five. The nearest traffic count we had was on Hardison. In 2019, the trip count was 1,000 trips, with estimated staff capacity north of 12,000. Schools are Coastal Elementary, Dixon Middle, and Dixon High School. Now, we'll take a look at the zoning map. You can see the property there is in the pink for that Residential 15. Nearby adjacent is R20, and there's some other R15 and RA in the area. Now, to compare the two districts, Residential 15 has a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, .34 acres, and the purpose of the district is to accommodate moderate-density, single-family in suburban areas of the county that have access to the necessary infrastructure to support development at that scale. Now, look at RA, rural agriculture, minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet or .46 acres, is to maintain the rural development pattern of the county while preserving the agricultural character, limited low-density, single-family, and limited commercial uses. Now, we'll take a look at the comprehensive plan, identifies the property in two categories. The first is medium-density residential, allows for medium-density, single-family areas, as well as planned multifamily and limited commercial. And the other is conservation, is to accommodate environmentally sensitive areas, such as those of areas of environmental concern, or areas within CAMA regulations, floodplains, and necessary open space to the county. Now, let's take a look at the map. You can see there, kind of the northern end of the property in that dark blue is the medium-density residential, and there, to the south, it is under conservation. Look at the environmental conditions, you can see the regulated flood zones for the property. Almost the entire property is in regulated flood zones, whether it's the VE, Coastal A, or AE, and those would be kind of the blue-to-teal spectrum colors. Now, look at the reasonableness and public interest. Their proposed rezoning may be considered reasonable because there's other residential zone in the area, such as this other RA in the area, and supported by six policies in the comprehensive plan. Three of those deal more with having diversity of housing, while the rest kind of look at, you know, preserving areas that are fragile in nature or important to our biological ecosystem. The proposed rezoning may be considered unreasonable because the comprehensive plan identifies the property as medium-density residential, and R15 is a corresponding category therein. Policy 97 deals with having more intense uses that are where you have to go through a residential area. Now, we'll take a look at what happened at Planning Board, met on August 24th. No citizen spoke against the rezoning at the time. Applicants spoke on behalf of the rezoning, and they recommended unanimous approval. Look at the aerials, so you can see there, to the north, along Percy Pageant Court is Kings Harbor subdivision. There, along River Oats Court is the Reds Cove subdivision. Take a closer look at the property, you can see their residential establishment there. And what it looks like from the ground, if you're at the very end of Tumbling Brook and looking at the property, and there would be kind of straight ahead, excuse me, would be the Baysden property. This property is also part of the 160D update. At the time, staff received a request to rezone the property from RA to R15. As it respectfully requested, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners consider the rezoning, and adopt a consistency statement, and approve the chairman to sign the necessary documents. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Carter. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for the Baysden rezoning, PREZ 2023-16. We have one citizen who has signed up to speak, and I believe it is on behalf of the applicants, Mr. Charles Riggs, 502 New Bern Drive in Jacksonville.
Good evening, Charles Riggs, 502 New Bridge Street, Jacksonville. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Mr. Baysden was made aware that his property had been rezoned in May of this year from RA to R15. He claims he did not receive notification in the massive rezoning that the county took place, or, you know, had back in the summer of 2021. From Mr. Carter Metcalf's report, you can see that he has one residence on the property, it's used for his personal use, he has no intention of developing it. So, he wants to keep it RA. We believe this is compatible with the adjoining properties, and it's consistent with the comprehensive plan of Onslow County. And let me say, the only reason that it's inconsistent with the future land use plan is because the future land use plan is requesting that the area be R10 and R15, whereas Mr. Baysden is requesting a more restrictive zone of RA, you know, being adjacent to the intercoastal waterway and the wetlands and that type of thing. RA is more suitable than the R15, and it will be less dense and more restrictive with the RA. So, with that being said, we're requesting the RA. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about the property.
If you
Thank you.
Yeah, you can sit on the front row if they have questions, they can ask you in just a moment. Thank you, Mr. Riggs. At this time, I'll close the public hearing, and it's available for Commissioner discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second motion and a second discussion.
I got a question. So, is this Ottawa, this Baysden rezoning in conjunction with the Ottawa rezoning? Are they one in the same?
No.
No. They are not one in the same. They were made aware at the same time regarding the zoning status.
Because it's the, I'm just, I'm just for clarification purposes, I got the, um...
They're two separate rezonings.
Okay. So, you're saying Mr. Baysden wants to rezone it and to keep it the way it is, or what it was?
Yes.
There's no plans to put a business or anything on that particular
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Our final rezoning this evening is PREZ 2023-00017. We'll be doing a public hearing on the proposed Ottawa rezoning. I'll turn it over to Carter Metcalf for the staff background.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and our County Commissioners. Third time's the charm for my last one up here with y'all. Ottawa rezoning request, PREZ number 2023, number 17. Applicant is the same, Charles F. Riggs and Associates, and the applicant is Mr. Danny, excuse me, the owner is Mr. Dan, Danny Ottawa. The requested change is from Residential 15 to rural agriculture, or RA. Tax map number is 749-4, located on Tumbling Brook Lane, Stumps Sound Township, and the rezoning area is 55.21 acres, and the existing use is single-family residential. The water services for the area is 6-inch Onwassa waterline along Tumbling Brook Lane. Wastewater is individual septic systems. Fire service is South Onslow, Holly Ridge. Fire district ISO of five. Traffic was taken along Harson Road in 2019, there was a trip count of 1,000 trips. Staff estimated capacity of over 12,000. Schools are Coastal Elementary, Dixon Middle, and Dixon High School. Take a look at the zoning map. See the property there is R15. And now, there would be, since we just approved the adjacent one, the adjacent would be RA instead of that pink. We'll now compare the two districts. Residential 15, minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, .34 acres. The purpose of Residential 15 is to accommodate moderate-density, single-family residential developments, suburban areas of the county that have access to necessary infrastructure and can support development at that scale. Now, in rural agriculture, a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet or .46 acres, and the purpose of this district is to maintain a rural development pattern, preserves agricultural character of the county while limiting low-density, single-family, and limited commercial. We'll take a look at the comprehensive plan. Medium-density residential is the first category, and this will provide for medium-density residential, single-family areas, planned multifamily, and limited commercial. The second category is conservation, is to accommodate environmentally sensitive areas, such as those within the area of environmental concern, floodplains, and important open space to the county. We'll take a look at the future land use map. See, majority of the property is in the conservation category. Where there, the northwest, there's a little bit of medium-density residential. Look at the environmental conditions map for the flood zones. Majority of the property is in VE, which is the most restrictive flood zone, as well as there's also AE and Coastal A on the property. Now, we'll look at the reasonableness and the public interest. May be considered reasonable because of other rural agriculture, residential zoning in the area, supported by six policies in the comprehensive plan. Some of those deal with diversity of housing, as well as protecting areas of environmental concerns, especially their water quality. And their proposed rezoning request may be unreasonable due to medium-density residential, have a corresponding category of R15, as well as not aligning with policy 97. At Planning Board, met on August 24th, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. There were four citizens who spoke against the request. Their concerns were traffic along Tumbling Brook Lane, reduced privacy, because if there's any new developments, there'd be now non-residents in the area, increased concern with any late-night noise from any proposed development, as well as the potential for reduced safety for local children. The owner and the applicant both spoke in favor of the request. Take a look at the aerials for the property. There you can see more of the Kings Harbor subdivision, or Kings Harbor. You can see there, the residents on the property. Take a little bit of a closer look. And then, as well, we'll take a look at what it looks like at the end of Tumbling Brook Lane. And for this rezoning, it was a part of the 160D update and was rezoned at the request at that time. As respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of PREZ 2023, number 18, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Carter. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for PREZ 2023-17, the Ottawa rezoning. We do have five citizens who have signed up to speak this evening on this proposed rezoning. I will call first, Mr. Danny Ottawa, 265 Tumbling Brook.
Danny Ottawa, 265 Tumbling Brook Lane. I bought the property back in the 90s, basically for the privacy that was back there. It was owned RA. There's still one little corner of the property that's still owned RA, that was part of the I appreciate the effort that the county made to notify everyone about the rezoning. However, I never got the notification. Had I Had I gotten the notification, then I would have voiced opinion against it. So we bought it RA, a lot to have to put back to RA. If you look at the thing we're proposing, a lot less development than would be allowed with R15. When we bought the property, there was a little path that we drove through under canopy trees to get back to, a dirt path. And, you know, of course, we acquired a right-of-way to get back from the family members that I bought the property from. And that was a long time before Kings Harbor came into existence. And they went in there, tore all my trees out, paved right over my right-of-way. And, you know, I didn't complain because it was theirs. But I hope they appreciate the fact that I value my privacy. I want to keep it back to the RA like it was whenever we purchased it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ottawa. Our next speaker is Mr. John Ottawa, also of 265 Tumbling Brook.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Danny's my dad, and John, my mom's here beside him, my wife, and brother. And I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to speak with us about it. And I'll be available for any questions, and I'll yield to Mr. Riggs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ottawa. Our next speaker is Mr. Brian Kester of 203 Willis Court.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Brian Kester, 203 Willis Court. I know this is a meeting for a rezoning for two large waterfront properties, so there's actually more on the agenda, but neither of which do I have a disagreement with the rezoning on the surface. I'm not someone to stop somebody from easing a tax burden on their own property and saving a dollar, but one of the properties has planned a wedding venue as part of that rezoning, and it's how they realized that the zoning had changed. And with that wedding venue planned, the fact that the rezoning is not conducive to that venue is kind of what started this whole process. And far be it from me to cost someone money, but on the other side of that coin is every resident of Kings Harbor, Reds Cove, and perhaps even Summer House, as a result, could potentially be impacted by having a venue there. So what happens to our property values when a wedding venue is in place just across the way? I'm not an assessor, so I'm speculating, but I think it's a pretty fair assessment. This property where the proposed venue backs up to several Kings Harbor properties, and now it's potentially impacts us and our property values, and that's why I'm here today. So to me, and to many in our neighborhood, there are three key things for the members of the board to bear in mind, the traffic, the noise, and the maintenance. I want to call attention to the fact that we are an active neighborhood where people are walking and running and riding their bikes with regularity. As it stands today, it is a quiet, established neighborhood with a lot of vehicular, or without a lot of vehicular traffic. And that is aside from the folks that live there now, and their occasional deliveries, et cetera. It's a tone that could be easily tilted out of balance by allowing commercial vehicles consisting of larger deliveries of tables, chairs, alcohol, tents, construction equipment, all of that coming and going. And then you add in people that don't live there that are going to need to use our roads to get to our proposed wedding venue in the back of a neighborhood, a property that borders our neighbor's yards. Those people coming and going would be going to a wedding, and let's face it, it's a celebration. It's a party. It is a memory in the making, and it is a good idea when it comes down to it. But the impacts that it have for their good time is, is an important thing to consider as well. And it does come at the expense of the people in all three of those neighborhoods I mentioned before. So increased traffic for commercial means and partygoers would equal a lot of prying eyes, eyes of people who don't live in the neighborhood, people that may have never known it was even there, but now they will. That cost comes at the expense of every resident's peace of mind. That cost comes, or excuse me, knowing that if I accidentally forget to close my garage door at night, that I'm going to wake up the next morning and I'm not be robbed blind. That's the kind of neighborhood that we currently reside in. I'm curious, and who would respond if there is trouble? If there is a noise so loud that a family just can't take it anymore? A party going late into the night or whatever the case may be, and maybe I'm being overimaginative here, but how does that dispute get handled? I think that a complaint to the manager of a venue is probably going to fall on deaf ears, go over like a lead balloon. I guess by that point, it probably won't matter what we think, because it will already be established and in place. But I bet the police would probably have an issue having to take noise complaints and things like that from residents in the area. Deliveries also means large vehicles on a road, and that's an additional burden on the maintenance of the roads, which is maintained by the HOA and thus the residents of the community. Noise might not be a consideration right now, but if residents can hear the trailer bar over across the intercoastal waterway on the island, I can only imagine what fast-moving cars and, you know, a party on the weekends in the neighborhood is going to do. I live two streets over from this, so I can only imagine how that sound's going to be. I know it may all be a little bit of a stretch, but that peace of mind, that cohesive peace, and those potential financial impacts are exactly why people move there. They move to the neighborhood because it's quiet, because it's low-key, and it's a hidden gem. And the thing that stuck out to me is, one of the neighbors had pointed out to me, is some of the goals when rezoning in 2020 or 2021 was to minimize non-conformities and protect the integrity of neighborhoods. And this, to me, is that in a nutshell. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kester. Our next speaker is Ari Dussette of 116 Everett Park.
Board of Commissioners, thank you for holding this meeting and for hearing us. Please forgive me if I've never attended one before. I'm not accustomed to the format, and I hope you'll bear with me if I don't know much about zoning or agriculture, but I do agree with some of the previous speakers. Mr. Kester, I share your concerns about noise. I do also live across the water. And Ottawa's, you have a beautiful property. My daughter and I canoe past it on Kings Creek, and we appreciate the diversity of wildlife back there, the waterfowl, the reptiles, the amphibians, the fish. I wonder how many of those will be impacted by this as well. This property sits at the inlet of Kings Creek and its estuaries from Spicer Bay on the intercoastal waterway. It's a very sensitive ecosystem. I don't know if an environmental impact assessment has been performed, but there may be an impact, especially as that whole community is on individual septic systems. What would be the impact of a lot of partygoers and their, shall we say, dietary excesses? I also worry about the excesses of noise and the excesses of speed that will happen following any events at something like a wedding venue through their neighborhood to drive those roads. The assessment that they could safely handle 12,000 vehicles a day sounds to me like something Elon Musk would have to engineer. Right now, the infrastructure is not in place. It's a bit of a generous assessment. We also worry about the impact to the local community. Someone earlier said that we're putting a slow back in Onslow, and I don't know about all that, but I do know it is a beautiful beachside community. Some people say it's a secret. It's a best-kept secret. The secret is out. My whole neighborhood is full of people who have moved from out of state to be there and to work so that they can telework, and they live in very expensive properties. They paid a lot of money to be there. Where we're at in Holly Ridge has seen a 100% property growth over the last five years. The recent Triangle Business Journal said it was the fastest-growing local economy in the entire state of North Carolina, and I know that comes with an increase in tax base. Why would we do something that takes away the very reason why people are driving from out of state to move here? Why would we take away the peace? Why would we take away the beauty? Why would we take away the environment that I think is the charm of this area? Putting something like a wedding venue on it really threatens that. And again, I led with, I don't know much about zoning, and so forgive me if this is not correct, but my understanding of residential agriculture zoning for the purpose of having a wedding venue is it's a pretty common thing for people to do so they can have what looks like an agricultural environment, maybe the benefits of a side farming hustle, but also a wedding venue that because it is zoned agricultural will also be protected from complaints from adjacent neighbors, just like farms are. They're protected by a lot of the nuisance complaints because they're zoned as agriculture, just like a swine farm would be protected, just like any other local nuisance would be protected. And so I worry about this zoning for that area as well. It's a beautiful piece of property. It's a beautiful area, and I'd really like to keep it that way, and I'd like to keep it without noise every night. Every night, I can walk out and I can hear the ocean from across the intercoastal, from across the island. And when there are parties at the campground on the island, we hear them. What if they were only a couple hundred yards away from our neighborhood? Our neighborhood is the biggest tax contributor to the entire Holly Ridge area. This is a big one as well. But why take away the charm of the area and decrease the property values there? Won't that also decrease the revenue that comes into the county? Again, I'm a layman. I don't know these things. I do know I have significant concerns about a commercial venue going in in that floodplain, in that environmentally sensitive area, without the infrastructure in place, without the roads for safe ingress or egress, with the prolonged EMS response times, and with who knows what kind of driving, following the events, driving out of the neighborhood in the dark. It's a great idea. I just think it's the wrong place for it. So thank you for your attention and for allowing us to speak at these meetings. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dussette. Our final speaker in this public hearing is Mr. Charles Riggs, who represents the applicant.
Charles Riggs, 502 New Bridge Street, Jacksonville. Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Ottawa just recently was made aware that his property was not zoned RA. So I submitted the application for rezoning. Let me say that the Ottaways, I surveyed the property for the Ottaways back in 95. In 1995, we surveyed the easements to the property and surveyed the 55 acres. So the actual easements were created to accompany, to handle Mr. Ottawa's property. So he was the first, one of the first ones to have rights to the easements. Kings Harbor came along later, and they have rights to it now also. But you must remember, he has access to his property, and he was given those easements first. In regards to, he wants to keep it, single-family, and there has been discussion and work related to a wedding venue adjacent to the intercoastal waterway. If you look on the aerial, you'll see a little cleared spot on the, on the water where he proposes, and that would be five acres or less. To give you some history, in the winter of 2020 and the spring of 2021, the Ottaways had contracted with architects and engineers, developing house plans, and putting together information for the wedding venue. Because it was zoned RA at the time, so it was allowed. I became involved in September of 2021. I checked with Onslow County Planning. Onslow County Planning told me it was still RA. The property card today is still RA. So even though the zoning is taking place, the tax office, I realize everybody's busy, but it still states it's RA. So I think we may have some vested rights in that they've started their work before the zoning ever happened. We had submitted a plan to technical review for Onslow County, found out, now they're saying it's R15. So we need to straighten that out. In regards to traffic, noise, of those items that the community has, you know, made us aware of, or we already knew, but we need to handle, those items are going to be handled through technical review. We're going to need to get a stormwater permit, a roads control permit. We'll be looking at the traffic and see if there's any upgrade of roads or any off-site improvements to roads. Water service, sewer service, that's all addressed during development, planning. So the zoning has to be in place for us to move forward with that. Again, as Mr. Ottawa said, he was, he was not aware, or, you know, I guess that was during COVID, unfortunately, so a lot of people weren't aware of what was going on with the zoning. So we're respectfully requesting to go from R15 to RA. It does, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the only reason it's not consistent with the future land use plan is because we're asking for a more restrictive zone than what the future land use plan requires. There, again, they're saying R15 is appropriate. We're saying RA. So if we were to develop homes on this site at RA, we're looking at 20,000 square foot instead of 15,000 square feet. So the density would be less than what we're requiring. But the RA does allow us to have the wedding venue, and it was a, a item that was allowed when they commenced their work on this project. After the public hearing, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. At this time, we'll close the public hearing for 2023-17, our public hearing on Ottawa rezoning, and it is now available for Commissioner discussion.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I've got a couple of, it gets back to what I said about a, about putting a business on there, and the reason why I'm bringing this up, because I've been approached by several citizens who voiced their concern, who live in that, that area, in that, that particular establishment. And a lot of people don't understand the rezoning issues, you know, we look at them seriously, they're not just something that we do every meeting, and I say that at every meeting, it's just not something that you, you take lightly. And I have a tendency to listen to the citizens when they're talking that live in that area and their concerns. I have to take that into consideration. Also, I take into consideration what you're, what you're trying to do, because you have a right to do that as well. But based on some of the comments that I heard, I even had people who could not be here who have sent emails in reference to this zoning, this area. I'm pretty familiar with the area. I know where it is. It is a nice, very, nice, nice area. And it goes back to my, I guess, pattern with the last zoning that involved Rock Creek. And a lot of people moved to Rock Creek to escape the city, but yet another company wanted to come in and put a warehouse, 60,000-square-foot warehouse, basically bringing the city back to them, and that's not the reason why they moved there. And so I have to take that into consideration as far as I'm concerned. The wedding venue brings, raises a lot of questions for me, because when you have a wedding venue, I understand about wedding venues. I mean, I, my daughter's been married, my other daughter was married, you know, we went to a venue, friends, et cetera. But the venues that we went to were in areas that there was no housing near them, not a particular area. You know, one was in a farm on some land out in the country, which was really nice. Another one was on what is now Heinz Farm, and things like that. And I hear wedding venue, and I can understand wedding venues, if there's alcohol to be served, it's going to be a fun time, no doubt. It's going to be loud. I know that area is walked by a lot of people, a lot of kids ride their bikes, people go out on walks to enjoy the scenery, et cetera. And I just wonder what that wedding venue would do, whether it's just a wedding venue, or then it's going to turn into other parties there, like maybe a concert, a small concert, or whatever it might be. And I'm not negating your right to that. But listening to some of the citizens, me personally, I just, I just can't, I can't support this, this RA. I just can't. I think the citizens have a right to live there. It's a nice neighborhood. They want their peace. They want to enjoy the national, the natural wildlife that is there, the intercoastal. And those are areas that I think we should preserve. I may be the only person that votes against this, so, so be it. I just got to vote how I feel, and I'm not, I'm not going to support this, so.
I appreciate everybody's concern and everybody that came to speak tonight. And I, I believe that the Ottaways have a right to do what they want with their property as much as possible. And I just want to, I just want to focus on, on the facts here. We don't know what they're going to do. They have, under the RA zone-
We don't know what they're going to do, uh, they have, under the RA zoning, um, uh, event venue is, is possible, but he's, uh, as Mr. Riggs said, there are a lot of hoops to be jumped through before they're going to develop anything. And the fact is, uh, in R fifteen zoning, they could potentially develop a hundred and fifty homes out there, and uh, I, I just think that would probably be a whole lot more disturbing to the neighborhood than, uh, than our, than what they'll do in the RA zone. Um, you gotta, you gotta look at what the, uh, I mean, you get a little emotional about these kind of things, I understand that, but uh, but the fact is, if we don't change the zoning, they could potentially put a hundred and fifty houses out there. Uh, why, why would you want a hundred and fifty houses on that property? I, I, I certainly think they ought to be able to zone it the way, I mean, we changed it, they didn't know about it, we need to get it back the way we had it before.
Any further discussion? So you've already got access to the property through Kings Harbor? Is that?
Well, yes, sir. Well, actually, the easement was there before Kings.
Right, right.
Yes, that's correct.
I have no further discussion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Onto our general items this evening. We have a surplus land item to consider, and Christina Russell, our purchasing division head, will present that.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. The county received an offer from a citizen in the amount of four thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents, in reference to four oh four Crown Point Road, parcel number zero four three one nine two, approximately point two three acre in size. The statute allows the county to sell the property that no longer serves a public purpose and is uneconomical and inefficient. The county's standard practice has been to sell the property using the negotiation offer, advertisement, upset bid process. This process allows for other interested parties to submit their upset bids towards this property when it's being advertised for a ten-day period. If no upset bids are received within the ten-day period, the property will be sold to the citizen. If the county receives any upset bids, the final high offer will be brought back to the board for consideration. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve Resolution Number two three dash zero one two, which authorizes the purchasing division head to conduct the sale of the property using the negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process, and to authorize the chairman to sign the resolution on behalf of the county. If anyone has any questions, I'll be here.
Sorry. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we need to take a five-minute?
Five-minute break.
Break.
Okay, thank you.